Call the regular August meeting of USD 431 to order. Roll call, all present except Sarah. Adoption of agenda, don't believe there's any changes to the one that was sent out.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Opportunity for visitors. See anybody, so we'll move on to item five, consent agenda. You have Mr. Krauthus if you want to.
Sure. Cash summary report based on figures from today. The August cash summary report is out of FA two for the board. I have the bank account balances. Those are, I included those today just to kind of give you a general idea of where we're at, you know, in terms of just fluid cash. The bottom, public funds is the, is the one that we actually do business out of on a regular basis, for your information. Then still check registry, that's basically all of the check transactions that took place over the last month, minutes for the July and, July tenth and July twenty-fourth meetings. Details on the account, activities accounts is still forthcoming, still working on that reporting. We're still having some struggles with getting that reporting to come up correct. So we'll have that by next month.
Any questions for Mr. Krauthus on any of this?
I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. The other discussion, if not, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero.
That's our strategic planning.
Yeah. Review the strategic plan?
We just wanted to add this to the, to the board agenda on a regular basis, just to remind you of the work that was done. Later on tonight, I do, I do have some revisions for the mission, as well as some outcomes for the, for the community teacher and student support. So our mission is to, the district community is committed to success of each student academically and socially. And then our vision, what we want to see is each graduate will be independent, reliable, employable citizens in the life and career. So we want to work towards these things, community teacher, student support, retention and recruitment, and communications and accountability. The admin team has worked on one of these and I'll give you an update on where we're at on that later tonight.
Okay. Any questions on the progress, what's going on? Everybody's quiet. If no questions, we'll move on to item seven, new, kind of new business, lots of updates, so.
Just want to give you some visual updates as to where we've been and where we've, where we're going. You know, the first major one that I keep getting asked about over and over is the turf and track. If you remember, this would have been our old turf and track back when he was trying to get all of the rubber out of it. He was able to get ninety-nine bags of rubber out of the, the old turf. You can even see some storm clouds in the background, so. And there's our old track. The rubber had been scraped off at this point in time, but you can see seams. If you get real, get real close, you can actually see some of the cracks that you could stick your hand down in. Little bit along the process, after all of the work had been done for the track to stabilize and to get our, to get our long jump and triple jump pits turned. Addition of the discus rings, and the turf had been removed at that point in time. This is July seventeenth. I'll look that up again, just to be sure. Actually, I was texting Chris Thexton from Great Bend. So July seventeenth, they, they laid our fifty yard line. There's a transit, Ralston uses a transit, worked his way from north to south, and then back to the north to make sure that it was perfectly straight as the process went along. And then everything worked off of the fifty yard line. They actually stuck pins in the ground through this process. There's the blank slate. And then here's where, well, that's an old picture. You can see the fifty is not, that's, that's not how that looks now. There we go. So just to give you a little perspective, every arrow, every number, the cardinal, all of the letters in the end zone, and every hash mark were hand cut and hand glued in. So just, I mean, so the, just, I mean, just the meticulous work. And then at each of the yard markers, you could see it before, but now you can't even hardly tell the, the small squares, they're about a four inch by four inch square of green, was hand put in as well. And so that's, that's, so you see that there's, there's actually purposeful separation from the sideline to the, to the yard markers. So they say about a month and things will kind of settle. I mean, we're, we're ready to practice on this. We're, you know, we're kind of keeping people off of it as they work through the asphalt process, but we will practice starting August fourteenth on this surface. This is just them spreading the rubber, you know, poured the rubber in the big hopper, it shoots it out the back. They can get down and back on one bag. And they put the ninety-nine bags of old rubber back in, and then they put sixty-two bags of new rubber. And that's all on top of the forty bags of sand that they actually put down to begin with. So the, the short bags were the sandbags, if you, if you drove by. Those showed up on Friday. They hit the ground running in the D and have our first layer of two inch asphalt all the way around the track. They'll finish the second layer of asphalt tomorrow, and then be back in a couple of weeks to actually rather lay the rubber. And then they'll do a top coat. So, so there will be, there will be a few things that will have to keep people off of the, off of the turf. In terms of practices, we should be fine with games, even if we don't have the rubber or the overlay. I'm still working on the schedule for that so that we don't have a whole lot of delay. So I did not see them actually lay the asphalt today, except for in the D-zone. Tyler did say that they, they poured the asphalt on the actual main track in one pour. So there's no, there's actually no seam like there was. So there was a seam. The gentleman that ran the act, the actual asphaltor, he's been working fourteen years and he says he's never had to go back to another track. So, I mean, that's his word, but this is, this is the company the ATG works with on a regular basis. They brought him in out of Kansas City due to the timeframe. Some of the other projects we've been working on, we re, we recarpeted, this is the, the conference room in the high school. It actually got a fresh coat of paint as well. Then we, we also did two rooms on the third floor in the same pattern and design. And then this is the technology room over at the middle school. That carpet had been ripped up quite a bit after the old Pitsco modulators had been taken out of there, and so this, this one was actually in pretty bad need of repair. So this will be a great addition to this room. This is the west hallway. Right over here is our music room, band and music room. This is actually a little bit early in the process because they don't have the baseboard down, but this is the new tile in that hallway. Have to give a lot of credit to Carpet One. They did all of the, all of the carpeting and flooring for us. This same material was put down in all of the elevator entrances as well. And so this kind of material, it's a, it's about a eighth inch thick plastic material. The color runs all the way through it, and we don't have to wax it, we just polish it. So we just burnish it, and then it, every time we do that, it just continues to get harder, harder and harder, you know, good surface for a long period of time. We did go ahead and carpet this entry. This is the entry that goes out to the straight west from that hallway, as well as the entry that goes out to the north to the football field. That way it kind of catches some of the dirt and debris as, as kids come in. And then a lot of credit to Tyler as well. We did have to take off some doors going into the auditorium and the band room, our music room, and because of the thickness of the carpet, Tyler had to cut the doors off. So got those cut off, put back on, all in the same day. So he did a great job. As of now, all of our bathrooms in the middle school and high school have new partitions. This is a solid material as well, little less susceptible for kids to put scratches in it. If they do put scratches in it, we can actually take an iron over it and it will actually take out a lot of the scratches, so it's a solid surface as well. We did go ahead and upgrade the hinges, just in case anybody wants to take a ride. So, not that that ever happens at all, but, and then we worked with Pure Zone on these and they did the installation on that as well. So lots of little bitty nuts and bolts go into, to those pieces of, of equipment. This is our beautiful chiller for the activity center. As I've talked to you about, we're, we're working on getting some side pieces for that. I'm still working on that with P1. This is up and going. There's a ton more pictures. I don't know what all of it is. I know it looks a lot different, but this is the main, this is the main focus as of right now, so. This beautiful piece of art, Diane Applegate did this in, in Lincoln's Library. I mean, it is, you should really take the time to go and see it. This picture does not anywhere close to do it justice because of the detail. She took a lot of different pictures and incorporated them into these. And if, if I'm not mistaken, there's a lot of different literary references in this. And then this isn't a great picture. You know, they had just resurfaced the, the driveway and the parking lot, and they have restriped the entire parking area as well. So that, that is done and completed, finished up last week. So lots of projects took place this summer. You know, every, I mean, we're, we're all but done with almost all of them. So really, this was the last one that I had really any kind of worries about, you know, the turf and track. We're kind of at the mercy of the, of those people. But just a lot of different things took place this summer, had a lot of great people, lot of small projects. I can't give the, I can't give enough credit to our custodial staff in, in each and every building, in each and every one of our classrooms, cleaning, takes place every summer. Our flooring crew flew through the buildings this year, so I think we had some great people that were working through that. Several of our custodians took the, took advantage and took some time off as well because they were, they did feel like that they were a little bit ahead of schedule, and so, so everybody's back in their own buildings, kind of finishing up the little projects and getting ready for the teachers to join us next, next week, so a week from today.
Just want to echo the, the hard work that all the staff did and appreciation for that, as well as the ATG crews there. They put a lot of hours and
Yeah.
A lot of sweat and tears, I think, probably
Right.
With the weather that they've had to deal with, so.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Any questions on any of those? Building control systems, that was one.
Oh, you're exactly right. I apologize. Building control systems has been a work in progress, and I wish I had a better update for you. We actually had a separate company come in and give us, walk us around. Tyler and I spent pretty much an afternoon with a different building control system. I know Dean had sat in on a presentation with a building control system out of Wichita. This other building control system is actually out of Oklahoma City, and they work and subcontract with the one out of Wichita. We're still waiting to hear back from them. So the reason for the change is we were looking at a year to get the building control systems in with the company out of Wichita versus three months, three to six months with the company out of Oklahoma City. So continue to look at your weekly updates and I'll give you more information, you know, this week, you know, it's, I really want to have, have some idea of where we're going on that, so. Not a lot would change of the original bid. They were actually more realistic in terms of digging into the middle school. The middle school's unique in that it's a pneumatic system. This system actually runs on air, and so due to, due to that system and the inability to get some of the pieces and parts, we may not be able to upgrade that one as much as we would like to. So, so I'm still waiting on some details from them, so. So, sorry about missing that one. There's not a lot of pictures with that, so.
Well, and that one, the original company had made assurances that they could be in here in July and August and
Yeah, that didn't happen.
And finish up, and like most of the, the companies, I think they, they're overcommitted and understaffed and
A hundred percent agree.
And, and availability of materials. But as far as that, that was ESSR funding, we're still good. We have time to
Yes.
Do that.
Correct. Dean's correct, that's the, the S R money. This is S R three money, so we still have a year to spend that. A lot of people are running into the issues of, of running out of time with their S R money, especially the S R three, and so we're, you know, they, they do talk about the, the an extension if possible. Hopefully, we don't have to worry about that. I would rather not worry about an extension versus, you know, because we, we should be able to get everything spent. This project is a pretty major piece of it, otherwise we should be fine in getting it spent, so.
And the other questions on any of that? Chiller, parking lot, summer paving. We'll move on to item B, change your credit card provider.
And this was suggested by Taylor, which she actually deals with this on a regular basis. We've had a few issues. Currently, we use a credit card provider, UMB. You may ask, well, why, why does a school need a credit card? You know, we make hotel reservations, a lot, a lot of our purchases are made with credit card, and then, and then we just pay UMB. So we, we utilize our UMB cards for, you know, purchases and reservations and different items to kind of hold things, and then we just pay UMB all at once. UMB has become increasingly more difficult to work with. When you get on their website as well to check our credit card balances, you know, we have multiple people showing up with multiple cards, and then all of the cards have different numbers, but all have the same balance. Don't ask me how that all works, but it's very confusing, very, very difficult to, to read and to deal with. So Taylor researched, came up with a company, this would be Bank Card, and this would actually be with our First Kansas Bank. We would work through First Kansas Bank, and it's with Bankers Bank of Kansas out of Wichita. Her suggestion was to, was to go with them. They, they would provide us the, the same service, but better than what we're doing with UMB. Again, you know, customer service is a big piece of, of why we're even looking at this. If we have an issue, we call First Kansas Bank and they help us first. That's our first step with this new company. UMB is a card out in the way, and we don't, we don't really have any local assistance in terms of this. So my suggestion is we would, we would move over to this First, First Kansas Bank, Bankers Bank of Kansas card, and then we would start the process of phasing out our UMB cards. So we would, we would collect, you know, we would get the new cards and then we would collect the UMB, close out that account, and then we would inform you guys when UMB was completely done.
Any questions?
I move to open credit card accounts with First Kansas Bank and close out the UMB credit card account as presented. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to open a credit card account with First Kansas Bank and close out the UMB credit card accounts as presented. Any other discussion? Lot, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero.
Thank you for that.
Item C, dispose of surplus items.
This is just a list of items that are collected in the, in the garage items. Most items are disrepair and, and things that we don't use. Mr. Kraft and I are also going to open a booth at the, at the Labor Day festivals to do old uniforms as well as pieces of turf. So just needing your approval to dispose of these items. And Don, we finally got the, finally got the soundboard on here. It only took us three years, so.
And you might explain a little bit about the, the old uniforms, what
Yeah.
Detail, or Mr. Kraft, if you
Yeah. We, we have inventory from three or four rotations ago. So, I mean, we have uniforms that date back into the, I don't want to say nineties, but we probably have some that date back into Okay. So we, we will not sell anything that is, is, well, obviously current or one past what I call generation. Everything will be older than, than at least one rotation. Does that make sense for everybody? So we're not, we're not getting rid of the new uniforms, we're not getting rid of even the last rotation. We'll get rid of older uniforms and that. And it's, I mean, it's basically just taking up space for the most part, so.
I make a motion, dispose of the surplus items. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to dispose and sell surplus items as presented. Any other discussion? Lot, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item D, budget and revenue neutral rate review.
I did go in and attach in your, in your packet, an updated version of the, this is the code ninety-nine or, or form ninety-nine. At this point in time, we're still, we're still revenue neutral, which means we're still taking in less than, less taxes, and our mill levy is still lower on our supplemental general fund, capital outlay, and bonds and interest. We are exceeding the revenue neutral rate in terms of our general fund. We cannot go less fun, or less mills than twenty mills on the general fund. So we, we will exceed the revenue neutral rate there because our assessed valuation went up. After our discussion at the, at the July twenty-fourth special meeting, I adjusted the bond and interest down two mills. That still has us bringing in about three hundred and, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but with our cash balances or cash reserves and our, and our bond and interest, we should be fine to do that for a little while. I did go ahead and take down the capital outlay and, and remain that at a six, six mills, which is, you know, which is more than, you know, sufficient for what we need at this point in time. One thing that I'm still working on, I went to my budget review in Topeka, and the, the information that I was provided by the county did not match up with what we actually received from the county in terms of, of revenue. So I'm, I'm really trying to go over that with a fine tooth comb. So if you compare the mill rate of the LOB whenever we discussed it in July twenty-fourth, and now it's a little bit different, just simply because there, there's been some discrepancy in some of those numbers. So I'm, I'm going back to the county tomorrow and gonna, and gonna talk to them about that, but I just want to make sure that I'm not, I'm, I'm not off. I'm still off on some numbers, so I, and I'm gonna probably, I'm not gonna go back to Topeka, but I'm gonna send my budget back to Topeka for at least one more additional review, but I did have the opportunity to talk to another superintendent, and we kind of hashed some things out, and I'm not crazy, but it just, the numbers aren't matching up this year like they have in the past, and so I'm just trying to go over it with a fine tooth comb to make sure that we're right. So I'm, I'm about eighty-five percent to the point where I'm ready to go ahead and publish. I probably will make sure I get all of those people talked to, probably ask Dean to come in and take a look at it one final time before I do get, go to publish. I think I've got until about the twenty-first to publish and give us plenty of time. If you do look on the forms that are, are included there, we will, we will plan to start about six forty-five to do our revenue neutral rate, and then we'll, we'll follow right in and do the budget hearing, and then we'll run right and then we'll run right into our regular meeting on September eleventh. So I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm about eighty-five percent confident on where I'm at on the budget right now. Um, I just need to, you know, spend some time, you know, making sure that I fine tune and, cross the Is and dot the Ts and that kind of stuff.
But the, the revenue, the money you got from the county is more than they say you.
Yes. Yes, the revenue I received and that we entered is more than the form that they sent us at the end of the year. Now, they've moved, they've had elections, you know, so there, there's multiple factors on their, on their side too. So, um, but it, when you, when you do something for two years and it comes out, um, it comes out a certain number, and then you do it this year and it comes out eighteen percent different, it, it sends up some red flags. So, um, the state, Craig Newsonger looked at it. He, I mean, he caught that immediately and we talked about that pretty much the entire hour that, that I was there with him, so. So, any questions?
Is the dollar amount a big amount that we're gonna have to struggle to pay it back if we have to?
No, no, there, there's no, there's no worry on that. No, no worry on that. It's a, um, it's not a matter of us having to pay anything back. It's a matter of the, um, numbers showing that it's, it, they sent us the, the correct amount of money. Um, but their records show that they sent us a, a smaller amount of money. So there's no, there's no, there's no worry of us having to send anything back.
Uh, i- i- if I'm correct, the biggest problem is you're supposed to use that county's number in preparation for the next year's budget.
Yeah.
And, and so that's what throws off.
Yeah.
Collections and the.
Right.
Extra amount of money that.
Yeah.
Or, or potential mill levy.
Potential mill levy, changes mill levies, changes, um, um, how much delinquent taxes are calculated at. And, I mean, it, 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 and then if they don't send us enough money compared to what our, our actual budget authority was, it kind of messes that up too. So, you know, we could, let's say we could spend two point two million dollars, but we only have two point one million dollars. So we can't, we can't spend more than if we don't have it, so. So it's, it, I, I mean, I, I'm still learning. This is, the budget is learning process. Every year, um, this year, it just seems to be more confusing, so. And one of the other factors is we've had some turnover and we changed systems in the middle of the year. So it's not a hundred percent the county's issue, um, but it's just a matter of making sure we have all of the information from all of the pieces that we've got as well.
Any other questions? Not, we'll move into daycare update.
So we mentioned it on July twenty-fourth, but we did not have the, uh, Facebook Live. Uh, just wanted to make sure everybody was fully aware that, um, Great Bend Economic Development was, um, awarded a two point two million dollar, um, uh, grant from the state. Um, a good portion of that will go to help fund a daycare facility here in Hoysington. And so, um, I will be working with Great Bend Economic Development and their, their entity A B C C, um, to begin that process as soon as we, we know something, so.
So in the next six months to a year, there'll be lots of memorandums and agreements.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Hopefully, and maybe sooner than that. I have a meeting, I have a meeting, um, next week with architect, so we'll see what happens, so.
Any questions on the, uh, daycare? Not, we'll move into, uh, old business, update review of KESHA policy. Mr. Kraft.
Good evening, everyone. Um, well, about middle of July, I, uh, sat in on, on two Zoom meetings with KESHA talking about this. Um, they're both the, the same thing, but the reason I sat in on two of them is, is we all had an opportunity for about the last forty-five minutes to ask questions. And it was really interesting that, you know, doesn't matter where you are in the state of Kansas, everybody had a lot of the same questions, and there's some new ones that, you know, that I hadn't thought of. But, um, you know, really, there's not, there's not a whole lot to update you on other than what we talked about the last time. Um, the one thing I think the state KESHA's done that is a good thing to help us schools out is they've created a form that the, the non-public school kids, if they want to play sports or do activities for us, they have to go on the KESHA website and there's a form they have to fill out. Um, pretty much stating reasons, where they live, all the information that's needed. Then once they complete that, before the state reviews it, they send it to, they'll send it to me. And then we will have to verify their address to make sure that they live in our school district. We send that back to the state and then they finish everything up. So, um, one good thing is, is KESHA's taken a lot of legwork out of our hands, um, with that whole process. I mean, that's really the biggest update there is. Um, I know when we talked last time, you know, I made the comment about, you know, can we require accredited program for eligibility? Remember, we talked about, um, you know, with eligibility, those non-public school kids that are, that play our sports or activities, all their parents have to do is say that they're passing their classes. Um, say that they passed five classes first semester, say that they're on progress to graduate. Um, so I asked that question in both Zoom meetings, um, and I asked it when we had our meeting at Great Bend with, uh, Bill Faflick, and he said, "We can't, we can't ask for an accredited program." So, you know, uh, you, you hope everybody is honest this day and age and, and, and I really don't, I really don't foresee this being a big issue for us here, but, um, you know, for me, that's a big issue as a, as an A D and as administrators. Um, I just don't think it's fair. I mean, our kids going to school have to, have to keep their grades up and they have to follow an eligibility policy and, and a non-public school kid that gets to allow to play sports and activities for us doesn't have to prove that they're making those grades. So, um, like I said, there's not a whole lot of updates. There's still a whole bunch of questions out there. Um, I think as the year goes on, there'll be more information. Um, you know, KESHA's gathered all this information. At some point, they're supposed to send us out, um, you know, a mass list of the questions and the answers and, um, so we have an idea, you know, if, if we come up with a question, you know, maybe somebody's already asked that question and what's the answer to it? So, um, like I said, I wish I had more for you, but, um, it was about, between all three meetings, about six hours. Didn't learn a whole lot more than what I already knew about it, so. Um, do you guys have any, any questions on it?
So if the parents fill out the form, are we required to take them then?
Yeah, we have to let them play sports and activities.
I don't know that I agree with that either.
I would, I would agree with you on that.
Especially if they can't prove their grades and that's not.
And to be honest with you.
Fair to our kids.
I haven't met an administrator yet through all three of those meetings that likes that at all.
It's not fair. It's not right. They should be bound to the same rules that all of these other students are.
What if a kid is ineligible with us and decides they're gonna go to homeschool and come and play? Do we have any?
No, not really.
We just have to let them play?
Yeah, and that's, you know, and I don't think it's going to be, like I said, I don't think it's gonna be a huge deal for us here. Um, I don't know if we have an astronomically large homeschool population, but in my time here, I've never heard of any of those homeschool kids wanting to play sports for us. Um, you know, I know in tennis, we have a homeschool over by, was it Russell? Now, I can't remember the name of, but they come to one of our, one of our tournaments. Um, you know, but they're KESHA approved, you know, but other than that, that's all I've, I've heard of in our area. I think where it's gonna hurt people is in the city. You, I, I feel like you've just, you've just opened up the transfer portal in high school sports. Um, you know, for instance, if you're in the Wichita area, I mean, a kid could be going to school at, um, at Wichita Trinity and then go play sports at Wichita Southeast and not even go to school there, if he lives in the southeast district area. So, um, you know, in, KESHA's said multiple times, they're not, they're not a hundred percent in favor of it, but at the same time, it was, it was passed by our legislators and.
So is it a policy that the schools individually will be able to not, um, implement in their districts, son?
No.
The reason for that, it's actually state statute now. They, they passed it through state statute, so.
So in a year or two, when it's not working for them, then they'll change it.
Then they'll change it, yeah.
Well, when, when everybody starts complaining.
Right.
And they, they finally see the issues.
They get the aftermath of it all.
I mean, I get, I understand why some people are doing this because you've got some kids at homeschool for whatever reason and, and there are lots of kids at homeschool who parents do a very good job, accredited programs, they do it the right way, and their kids just, you know, maybe they like basketball. They just want to be involved and they're not necessarily a great athlete. I, I get that. I understand that. You know, and I've been in school districts where we've allowed, um, homeschool kids to play on our sport teams, and I've been at some that don't allow. Um, you know, I guess if they had to follow all the same rules and policies all of our kids did, then.
Well, and that's where I stand. I don't have a problem with the homeschool kids playing because they're not offered that at home, obviously. But I just feel like if they're gonna do that, then they need to be held to the same standards.
Yeah, so if we, if we do get one of these applications, we'll, you know, we'll have to be very diligent on making sure that they are in our district boundaries and probably have to make a home visit and knock on the door and make sure that's where they actually live. So, um, we have that right and ability to do that, so, you know, that's, that's part of our process of, of double checking and make sure they are technically one of our district boundary kids, so. Be more fun to come in the, in the future with us, I'm sure, uh, so anyways, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Uh, June twenty-three, policy update review.
So I sent you, um, just kind of a commentary, uh, through our weekly, um, uh, time a couple of weeks ago. I just want to highlight a couple, um, a couple of things in this policy. The, the reason I'm being so careful about this is because it has pieces like, um, the, the House Senate bill or the, the bill one thirteen. It also has, uh, parts of the, the new bill, um, that, um, goes into effect in January concerning the, the limitations on out of district students. Um, so I just want us to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in terms of, of these policies. There's a lot of, there's a lot of policies tucked in here that, that are, I mean, are, are just, we may not necessarily agree with, but somebody has decided to make them state law. Um, so, um, and there's a lot of things tucked in here that we as district, and I say districts, we as districts across the state of Kansas have done for years and now all of a sudden they become state law. And so now all of a sudden, it needs to be in our policies. So, so I just want to make sure that we're, we're taking our time to, to look through these. I mean, you know, I know a lot of districts that have rushed in and just carte blanche, you know, passed all of these. I, at this point in time, I don't see an issue with us doing that. But again, just wanted to make sure that we're, we're taking our time and, and looking through that. Um, you know, a couple of things, you know, I do want to highlight, I want to, you know, get down to J G F G A. This would be the use of Narcan. Uh, the, there's been a lot of talk, um, and I, I say a lot. I mean, there's been some talk of districts having Narcan on hand, um, due to, um, you know, fentanyl um, or other overdoses that, that could help with this. Um, internally, we've kind of talked that we, we would rather not, um, have Narcan on hand, um, you know, and, and actually have, you know, people that have been through much more training than we would have, um, go through this. Um, I, I, varying opinions, um, you know, if you have it on hand, you can administer it. Um, but if it's administered incorrectly, I, I don't know the side effects of that. Um, so that's, that's still one that I, I definitely feel like we need to take some time, um, and look at. Then on the, on the second set of policies was the disposal of property, uh, real estate property. Um, that is a result of, um, a few schools that have been shut down over the last couple of years. Um, not, not only Wilson, but there's also some other schools. And so now the state has, was it last refusal or first refusal? First refusal. Um, some unintended consequences of that is the legislation is only in sess- in session a s- a certain amount of time. Um, so, you know, so a building could set empty for six to eight months before they actually have the opportunity to act on, on that. Um, so it's not necessarily something that would directly affect us, but, you know, those are, you know, that is one that has actually been passed into state law. Um, the complaints, um, actually does a good job of doing some clarification of some of the processes if there is formal complaints, um, to come to, uh, to come to administration, um, you know, to the board, you know, those, those types of things. So it, it actually clarifies a lot of, lot of the policy that has been put into place over the last couple of years. You know, I do want to go ahead and bring to your attention the, um, you know, the, the non-resident students. Um, there is some concerns on my part concerning the, um, timeline uh, that has been proposed in this bill. Using the timeline, the administrative team will be out starting June fifteenth to August first. And online enrollment does not even begin for us until about July fifteenth. So this year, we started it July seventeenth. So what's, what is in this law is that the application process for non-resident students will be from June first through June thirtieth. So, I mean, I mean, I, I can honestly say that I don't want to make the decision to have a student actually come into the district or not because I'm not the one there every day that needs to work on that student. Now, obviously, if that's where it actually comes down to, I will make a judgment call based on information that the administrative team and I have talked about over the last three years. I mean, but, you know, the timeline that they put into place doesn't, doesn't work in the real world. Does that, does that make sense? I mean, I, I'm not trying to make excuses, but I mean, you know, there's a lot of the policy that does not work in the real world. Um, this is one of those policies that, you know, I've been in a district that has, that has had a third of its student population come from outside the district, okay? So for, for me, it's not an issue of, it's not an issue of making a decision who are, who, who has the opportunity or the privilege to come into our district or not, okay? And so, um, so as we, as we do move towards that December meeting where we will set our, um, caps, I mean, my, my feeling still is, after reading this policy a little more extensively, we set our caps high and then we set our criteria very clear on how we, on how we accept, you know, incoming students. That being said, that's, that's an interpretation administratively that may not match up with state law. Does that, does that make sense? Does that, does that make sense? So, I mean, and, and the administrative team and I have had, you know, quite a bit of discussion about this as well. But really, the, you know, the local board has the decision, I mean, I know it's state law, but we have the, this, we have local decision as to how we're going to carry out that state law. So I'm, I may be overstepping my bounds a little bit, but I really, I'm, I'm really concerned with how much overreach the, the legislature has made in, in the last two sessions. So if I'm out of line, I, I apologize, but I don't think, I don't think I'm really that out of line, so.
Well, my thought is, one of those res- long resolutions we just passed last month was about home rule and that the district has authority for home rule. Now whether that...
Right.
If that Trump state statute or not, probably our attorney would need to look at that. I've got suspicion where he'll tell us, but, but...
Any questions about any of the policies that have been on there?
Let's jump back to the, the, the first one, the Narcan.
Okay.
Got two verses in here, what's your thoughts on that?
I don't know, I mean... Is there any, I always worry about the repercussions of, you know, administering something.
Well, and, and my thought is if we had a school nurse in every building that was right there, that would be different where, where we don't.
I guess my biggest thing is, you know, nine times out of ten, you're, you know, you're not gonna know for sure whether it's an overdose. And not everybody is trained to be able to tell whether it's an overdose or not. So if you have a kid who is unconscious because they had a seizure and you give them Narcan, what are we liable for, you know, because we don't know what it is? And so then, I mean, we live in a small enough town where it takes EMS not very long to get to us.
Response time.
So, so I guess if it was my opinion, I would say not to carry it because we don't have a nurse in every building and, you know, we're not gonna, we're gonna have a lot of people making judgment calls and assessing a situation that aren't trained to assess a situation.
Right. And then that's kind of where we've been in that, you know, we are in a, in a relatively close enough proximity to the hospital and/or to EMS in that, you know, if, if a student is unconscious, then probably calling nine-one-one at that point in time anyway. Then, then the trained professionals would have the opportunity to make that ju- that judgment call at that point in time. As opposed to those of us that would get, you know, like a thirty-minute training on, on something that we, we don't deal with on a daily basis, so.
Yeah.
So I, I guess my, my recommendation on that one would be to go ahead and pass the policy, but then have, you know, I'll, I'll add, I'll, I'll get an addition, addendum to that to say, at this point in time, you know, we, we have chosen not to carry it in the building. And I'll, I'll double check that with K S B to see where that would fit in. If that's acceptable to you guys, then we'll have that for the next board meeting.
Does that sound, sound all right? And so the plans are the September meeting that we'll review and pass?
Yes. Which one is it?
The one you have, this is the building one, you have to have a...
Yeah, the out-of dis-
Or the out-of-district one.
The non-resident student one, we will... We have to have a hearing. Now, what that means is, I'm not exactly sure. So when it comes to the actual meeting, I'll, I'll have to get some clarification as to what that's gonna look like, but we will publish, we will have to publish that. So, so we're gonna, we're gonna be publishing a lot next meeting. But, but it'll, I mean, it's supposed, it's supposed to make it a more open and transparent process that, that, that we're, we're considering these, that one in particular. The, these policies, these new policies, so, so, so yes, next, next meeting.
Any other questions? Not, we'll go to the strategic plan and goal updates.
So up above, you're able to see the, the strategic plan that was presented by Gary Seacrest. As the, the administrative team, and I sat down last week and, and began the process of looking at this. One modification, and I, I included this in your board meeting minutes or board packet, I didn't have a chance to, to modify the actual document. It's on a different program, it's not just a PDF or a Word document, so. So our, our suggestion was the mission is USD four thirty-one and its community are committed to the success of each student academically and socially. This is acceptable to the board, it's a, it's a minor modification.
Any objections to that? Okay.
So, I mean, if you want to see the other one, you can pull it up on your... So just a minor, minor change, but we felt like that the district community was not necessarily what, what we were thinking about. We wanted to include the school and then our community. And then we were able to get to outcomes of the community teacher and student support. So we recommend outcomes be meaningful and professional development with follow-up, district collaboration pre-K through twelfth grade, community involvement, and that means bringing in community to the schools as well as schools going out into the community, and then fostering various experiences. Just to follow up on a few of those, you know, meaningful professional development is, is a variety of different things that, you know, maybe teachers are the ones that decide that they want to go to professional development or professional development that we provide within the district. But then it's very important that we follow up on that and it not just be a one-time thing. Our most successful professional development has been our resilience training over the past year. And we felt like that the se- success has been attributed to, it has been over a year's process. And we continue to, to go through that this coming year with review and then working on different modules with that as well. So that's been very successful. District collaboration pre-K through twelve. The big idea with this was we typically function as four separate buildings. Whereas, you know, what happens at Roosevelt is not also, is not always known as to what happens at the middle school and vice versa. So we want to foster opportunities for collaboration in times where they can work together on different things. Community involvement, we have various things that work within the community and, and we, we send kids out into the community, but how can we bring them in? How can we bring the community into the buildings? Whether that be math nights or, or, or different activities, but also, you know, in academic settings as well, but then also foster some of those ideas of getting kids out in the community some more as well. And then fostering various experiences. We would like to, you know, continue, you know, where some kids have a lot of opportunity to be able to go and see different things. Some of our students don't have the opportunity to always get out and see different things. So continuing to foster, you know, like our field experi- uh, field trips that we do at our elementaries and what does that look like? But what kind of opportunities at the middle school and high school can we go ahead and foster as well to can, continue to help students have a well-rounded opportunity as they're growing? Did I cover all of that? So these guys did a phenomenal job of, of having honest conversation to get to those. So any questions?
Don't think we need any action right now, that's just an update till we get it all wrapped up?
Yep.
Okay. All right, go on to item D, needs assessment.
So the needs assessment is just a review of what we talked about last month. Any questions from last time? You know, this is the second month you've had the opportunity to look at it. I didn't modify this much at all, if any. So, you know, one of the main focuses is to, you know, continue our, our growth. You know, continue to, to foster, you know, increases and increases in funding and time for staff development, which is one of our outcomes, but, so, any questions on this?
Let's not, we'll move on.
Okay.
To reports. Mrs. Walker, welcome back.
Good evening. I guess I'll, I'll start with our Jump Start because it started last week and it's been going on this week. It's been really successful thus far. We've had about a seventy-five percent attendance rate of kiddos that were referred that are coming. So I'm happy with that. They rotate fifteen minutes through sessions that have to do with math and reading. I, obviously, this couldn't happen without the staff that is, you know, willing to participate in this, and so very many kudos to them. They, they make it a great opportunity for our kiddos that are referred to this. So I appreciate them all. They actually had the opportunity to attend the Sha- the Schaefer Art Gallery on Friday out of Barton County, so all of the art exhibits that were there were made or are made out of recycled materials. So it was a really good opportunity, maybe some of them wouldn't have got to go to that, so we were able to take them to that. As of today, our enrollment numbers at Roosevelt, we have a hundred and fifty-six enrolled pre-three through first grade. We have had several new incoming kindergartners, which we have done some screening on and of course decided with parents whether we feel like their successful point would be in our transitional kindergarten or in kindergarten. So we've had some go either way. Our, actually, our transitional kindergarten is the biggest we've had since we've put that program in place, so that's, that's exciting. It means that it's, it's doing what it's supposed to do, so. Our, so our staff at Roosevelt, our main focus or main curriculum with our phonics is pathways to reading. They got their, their first training, I believe, in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. It was my first year here. So they have now come out with some new materials with the pathways to reading. So Jane Seward, who is one of the presenters for it, has agreed to come out and do a refresher course with the Roosevelt staff. So she'll be coming out on August fifteenth and they'll be doing just a refresher course and kind of getting updated on the new materials. They'll be doing that from nine to three, so we thank her for wanting to come out here and I know that the staff is really excited about doing that, so. We will have our Roosevelt teacher meet and greet on Tuesday, August fifteenth. It's scheduled from eight o'clock, but the schedule is divided up into like preschool, AM and PM, like last name, A to M, and then N to Z. So please make sure you check out our Roosevelt Facebook page because the schedule is on there. So that tells you when you need to come. We did that, we've done that now a couple of years where, and it just makes it a little easier because we have less kids in the classroom at one time, so the teacher can actually visit with the parents and stuff, and so. So yeah, please definitely check out our Roosevelt Facebook page. We have schedules on there and some other important information. And then like Mr. Kratus said, staff comes back on Monday. Actually Roosevelt's had staff in and out for the last two weeks, so there's some that are already back. And then, so we'll do our building staff meeting. We're gonna wait until the sixteenth to do that because aides will also be in the building and so it'll be nice just to have one big staff meeting. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cowan.
Good evening. We've had Jump Start this last week as well. We had sixty-six students in attendance. We got to attend the Schaefer Art Gallery exhibit as well. Some of our students made a connection with the theater director and they're putting on a Harry Potter production and I think some of our students are gonna try out for it. So that's pretty exciting. So Tuesday, August fifteenth, we'll have our open house from five-thirty to seven-thirty. This year, we're doing two different presentations, one at six and one at seven, just to go through basic skills with parents. Where do you take your kids the first day? How you drop off? The hours of the day? How to call in your kid's sick and who to contact? How to use Class Dojo? Those sort of things. Just make sure everybody's all set up and ready to go. If parents can't attend one session, they can go to a different one. It's gonna be the same information. Mrs. Applegate is also going to talk a little bit about our title services and Mrs. Westhoff about our backpack program and different services off, offered to families, so will be very informative. We will be selling mums as a fall fundraiser. If anybody's interested, please contact our front office after the fifteenth. We're gonna sell from the fifteenth to the twenty-fifth and they'll come in on September fifteenth. It's the same company that we do our flower sales through and it cut us a pretty good deal, so we thought we'd give it a try. We tried it with band one year and it went really well. So if you like mums, hit us up. Our mural is finished in the library. It is spectacular, thank you to Mrs. Applegate. Sunny wanted to put a piece of Plexiglas over it to protect it forever. It is, it's beautiful. We will have a HEPA parent meeting August twenty-four, twenty-first at six-thirty at Roosevelt and we encourage any Roosevelt or Lincoln parents to attend. Our rock wall is shipped and will be installed on August twenty-fourth. It will take one day to install and it will be professionally installed, so a person from the company Everlasting Climb will be down to install that. So thank you so much for your support in that project and thank you to our community for making it happen with our flower sales and things. It means a lot. The kids are really excited, so if you get a chance after the twenty-fourth to come on out and see it, please do stop by. Fifth graders are planning their trip to the state fair again this year. Last year was great. Even gonna see a cow being born, so really looking forward to that trip. There's a back-to-school scavenger hunt put on by the high school case, August ninth and tenth. If anybody needs help with school supplies, please have them contact the Link- the Lincoln front office as well. We're here to help any, anybody that needs help with them. So if you hear anybody in the community that needs school supplies, please send them our way. For in-service coming up, we'll be doing a review of our resilience training. We really want to hit that strong at the start of the year and reinforce it. We'll also be doing I X L math training. Our startup sit meetings, we always meet with the, with Roosevelt and the middle school to talk about students and what they might need for the upcoming year. And we'll also have our health meetings for students that might have some health concerns, get everybody informed and on the same page before school starts. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burgard.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to give a shout out and thank you to our custodians for all the work... First of all, I'd like to give a shout-out and thank you to our custodians for all the work they've done in our buildings over the summer. They came into our middle school and the plan was to refinish the main hallway in, in my building and they ended up getting the main hallway and the square done. So, I mean, it looks really nice, so. And, and then, you know, the many other tasks they did throughout the summer, so I want to thank them. As Shelby and Krista said, we're, we're in the middle of our Jump Start too. We started our second week this week. We're gonna finish, we're gonna end it on Friday with a trip to Schaefer Gallery to, to see the reclaimed art exhibit. I saw some, some pictures on Instagram and Facebook or whatever and it looks pretty cool, so looking forward to that. We got about twenty kids that show up for that and, again, shout-out to the teachers and the, and the staff who put in the work and time to, to make that happen for our kids, so that they're ready to be successful when the school year starts. Right now, again, we're, we're getting ready to get started for the year, working on fine-tuning the schedule. I can probably speak for Jordan when I say if we don't have to look at the schedule for another six months, he'll be very happy with that, as, as will I. We're, our sixth grade orientation will be next week as, as well as our back-to-school barbecue. We're gonna do things a little different this year. We have a big welcome in the gym where I talk to everybody and then have some breakout sessions where we go over some handbook policies, you know, the ones we feel are important. You know, how to log into Power School, how to navigate our website for those who, you know, may not know how to do that and talk eligibility and, and, you know, some athletic stuff like that. Just, and some other programs and, and things that we provide for our, our students. You know, that way our parents know what's, you know. And the plan is to have all those sessions recorded. That way, we can put them on our website. That way, a parent, if someone's not able to attend, you know, it's out there for them so they can look at it, you know, view it that way. So, look forward to doing that, seeing how that turns out. Kind of revamped some of our classes this year. We, we've modified our seventh grade computers class into more of an entrepreneurship class. Basically, they are gonna go through the process of starting a food truck business, printing out, working through the Google platform, you know. So, they're gonna create a, a business card through Google Docs and, you know, expenses, startup expenses and Google Sheets and then presentations and things like that. So, a little bit more conducive to real world and just typing, you know, for fifty minutes. You know, other than that, you know, right now, we're finalizing, you know, what we're gonna do. The first couple days back with teachers as far as meetings and things like that. And, and then, you know, getting ready for students to come next week, later next week. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flowers.
Good evening. So, we're preparing for kickoff of fall sports and activities. Next week, we actually, sorry, not next week, starting tomorrow, we have band camp, which is gonna be combined seven through twelve, starting at ten to noon and then continuing from one to three each day. Students will get to start preparing for how the marching's going to be this year. Top of that, we're preparing for our meet the coaches and all next week on Tuesday night from six to seven. We'll start off in the gym, so that way I can go over some things with all the parents. And then, we'll break out, our volleyball team will stay in the gym. Football will head to the band room and cross-country will go to Mr. Cook's classroom. Otherwise, I just keep advising and making sure everybody knows, get your physicals in, get your concussion forms and consent forms. That way, all athletes can start practice on the fourteenth and get prepared for the season. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mason.
Good evening. As Mr. Flowers said, we do have our combined middle school and high school band camp tomorrow through Thursday, ten o'clock to three o'clock. They'll be in the high school gym, since they can't be outside marching on the track. Students probably like that better, anyway. A little cooler. We are gonna have our student chromebook handouts this Thursday, starting at eight o'clock. Mr. Mead will have them down there, ready to go. I'm sure all the kids will show up, ready to go, tech fees paid and everything. So, start with seniors at eight o'clock and, and get those handed out Thursday. We do have our freshman orientation on Wednesday, the sixteenth, from twelve-thirty to three. This is a tradition that we've been doing for quite a while and I think it really does help the freshmen with that, you know, getting acclimated with the building and getting used to their locker and they actually go through their class schedule without any other students there. Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Rife do a great job of heading that up and organizing that. They had our leadership kids in this afternoon and this morning, getting them trained and ready to go for that. So, that'll take place next, next Wednesday. Our back-to-school bash for all the students will be on Friday, August eighteenth. That'll be the, after that first full day of school. If we're able to get onto the field, we'll have yard games out there, you know, bags, nine-square or whatever, I mean, all the different games that the kids have. It's a good time, so Booster Club usually provides a meal for that. We do yard games from about seven to nine and then a dance from nine to eleven. So, I still always say that's my favorite dance of the year. It's the most informal. The kids are excited about being back, so that's always fun. Once we get back into school, we get started right away with our meetings with Jostens, who does everything with our sophomore class reunions and senior graduation announcements and all that. So, they actually meet with the freshmen first and we do a commitment to graduate. It's a pretty good little ceremony. They show a video, just, you know, the advantages of graduating high school and what it can do for you and they end up signing a banner. So, Jostens will be in the building for this, during that first full week of school. I am gonna have an open house again on Labor Day weekend, Sunday, September third, from one o'clock to three o'clock. No appointments needed, just come and go. Two years ago, I think I had two people show up. Last year, I think I had about thirty-five, so we'll see how that goes. And I just wondered from you guys as well, I've been, I've talked with Steve Mortensen, who's the vice president of our Providence Canine Services, the drug dogs that come in. And he informed me about this Swab Tech. So, basically, what they are is, and they look like Q-tips, basically. So, if you find a, you know, vape pen on a student, and it works on the vape pens that have the removable refillable cartridge, swab that with this swab and, and drop something on it. If it turns purple, that's positive for THC in that, in that oil. And I think we'd all be really surprised on how much that we probably have in our buildings. So, there's, there's just a little training video that I watched on, on how to get certified to do those. Now, that Swab Tech in itself won't stand up in court as far as criminal charges against that student, but that does give me reasonable suspicion to extend that, that student's suspicion, you know, suspension for having THC as opposed to just, to just nicotine. So, I just wanna make sure you guys are aware that that is something that we're gonna be doing at the high school this year. Because per our policy, if it's a non-THC vape pen, whether it's nicotine or not, or just the mist, it's a one to three day suspension for the first offense. For a misdemeanor illicit drugs, it's five to ten for the first offense. So, that's a big difference, obviously. And we always call law enforcement to the building anytime we find a vape pen and they cite them. But now, they have reasonable suspicion to test it legally themselves to maybe charge that student with, you know, illegal possession of drugs. So, just so you're aware, that is something that we're gonna be doing this year. And then, lastly, we are gonna have a Booster Club meeting this Wednesday at five forty-five at the Activity Center. So, if you have students in the building and wanna help out with that or help spread the word, I think the, the misconception out there is if you join Booster Club that you are tied to all these duties, you know, that you have to do, I'm gonna bet you know this better than anybody. You have just your handful of people that are really involved with it. So, you basically have your officers showing up to every meeting and they're doing everything. Planning, you know, concession stands and planning after prom and the back-to-school bash, all that. So, I really encourage parents that have kids in, in the high school to show up to those meetings. They don't have to be actively, you know, an officer, making decisions. But, you know, the more we have in there, the less everybody has to do to help out. So, help spread the word on that as well, please. Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kraft, save the best for last.
On the, on the first, we had our high school coaches meeting. Meeting I have with all of our, all of our coaches, going over any of the new policies and rules from KESHA, building updates we have, building policy changes. Had a good meeting, had a great turnout. I think I was only short two coaches out of our entire coaching staff, so it was, it was pretty good. We even had a couple of activity sponsors there, which is great. They're always more than welcome to come. We had that at five-thirty, then at six-thirty, I had a parents' meeting with the parents. You know, I felt like it was, it was a good meeting. I think we had three times of parents there, what we had last year. It was, it was a really good crowd, so I was very pleased. I was able to go over the SB one thirteen and a couple of other things. And, you know, some new athletic department changes we had in the handbook, some new high school handbook changes that, that applied to those parents. Like I said, it was a good meeting. Then after that, we had our fall sports meetings with our coaches, which, again, all of them I got around to, were very well attended. So, I was very happy. Third time I've done it and I think this is our best attendance yet. So, I'm very, very happy that everybody turned out. Practices start on the fourteenth, as everybody said. Our first competition for football, we have that jamboree at Grapevine on the twenty-fifth. Volleyball is going to do a jamboree this year at Hayes High with Hayes High Smith Center and Ellis. That'll be pretty darn competitive. That'll be on the twenty-second. Cross-country has our first meet on the thirty-first, girls tennis on the thirty-first and girls golf on the twenty-ninth. So, we are right around the corner from hitting the ground around it. So, I'm not a hundred percent sure on participation numbers yet for our fall sports. I mean, obviously, it's all preliminary, so hopefully at the September meeting, I'll have, I'll have numbers, but it looks, looks pretty good as of right now for, for most everything. So, pretty excited for the new year to get going. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kratus.
We did have some issues with our all-call system that we found, basically, the day of the, the fall parents' meeting. So, we, we do believe we've got that resolved. Jordan did a good job of contacting, through our share and getting them on that. And so, we just didn't realize it was happening until it was, it was too late. But even with that, we, we felt like we had good attendance at that meeting, so. So, you know, I've sent the back-to-school schedule to you. We will be meeting at the high school auditorium on, with our opening at eight o'clock on Monday, the fourteenth. You know, feel free to, to come at seven-thirty and have a breakfast burrito in the high school cafeteria. And, you know, it's always interesting to watch how teachers interact whenever they come back to, to school. It's like they, it's, it's like they haven't seen each other all summer, even though I know some of them have. So, it's actually a, a great day to, to be in the buildings, seeing them come back. I am half tempted to rope off the, the back half of the auditorium, make them all sit up front, but we'll see, we'll see what happens. So, eight o'clock on the fourteenth will be kind of our kickoff and then we'll be turning everybody back to their buildings for, for the meetings. That evening, six-thirty, will be our back-to-school barbecue at the Activity Center and we'll be cooking hamburgers and hot dogs. And, you know, we'll, we'll be working on, on getting that all ready to go throughout this next week. Because do remember, it is a week from today. It just kinda sneaks up on you, doesn't it? So, one thing that will be, we, we agreed on in the negotiated agreement is an employee assistance program. It's something that we've had through ESDAC in the past, but because of cost savings, ESDAC has dropped it and the individual schools has picked that up. It provides some counseling services as well as work-life services for the individual employee to, to be able to help them out in times of need. One thing that's been brought to our attention and, and something for you to consider that we can act on at the next board meeting is the, the suggestion and idea of naming the press box after Blake Harris, longtime radio announcer, huge supporter of Cardinal Athletics, passed away. So, that's something to discuss and, and the family has also designated and donated some money for upgrades with all of the irons in the fire that we had this summer. We just weren't able to make that happen this summer, but the plan is to get a good plan in place for next summer to have that take place. So, something to consider for next, next month.
Can you review or send us, we do have a policy.
We do have a policy, yep.
On naming things, so.
Yep, I will send that policy.
Forward that to us, so we do it right. I think it's a great idea.
Last thing that I have is board-related KSB conference is November tenth through the twelfth this, this coming fall. Just something to keep on your radar. I will be attending, so transportation will be there if, if you wanna ride with me. I, I think I do an okay job driving, as the admin team. But, again, it's not something that you have to attend all three days. If, if you just wanna go on the eleventh, that's an option as well. I think I reached out to a couple of you, because I had, I had registered some spots, sorry, and didn't realize I was gonna send emails out. But, wanted to have, and registered those spots to make sure we had some, some available slots for us in case things did get filled, filled up. So, tenth through the twelfth of November, kinda keep that on your calendar and see if that's something that you want to do. And I'll start, start pestering you individually and start to see if that's something you wanna do. All except for Dawn and Dean. Unless you guys wanna go.
We'll still go.
Hey, you could go and really party it up this time.
Yeah, Dawn and I will tear up the town.
So, that's all I've got. You've heard me enough tonight.
Okay. Any board member reports? You did attach?
Did attach a thank you. From Claire Barton, we did donate some, some items. Some of those leftover items that we have from Christmas presents, we donate those to auctions and different things so that, you know, different foundations and various things in the community.
Legislative report.
I don't have anything.
Okay. If nothing else, we've got item ten, consideration of district personnel. I move to go into executive session for twenty minutes? Try that.
I like ten.
Ten? Ten minutes? No, fifteen minutes.
Okay.
We won't get done in ten. Pursuant to non-elected personnel at executive, exception under KOMA for the purpose of discussing nomination-resignations with Mr. Kratus and Mrs. Cowan present. Open meeting will resume in... What's fifteen minutes?
Eight forty-five.
Okay.
Second.
Eight twenty-five. Most of them made in secular, all in favor? Close, most of them carry six zero.
Okay.